I'd like to call the order of the Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission Regular Meeting, scheduled for Thursday, December 14, 2017. Please rise and pay your respects to the flag.
I am the President of the United States of America, and the United Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do you have a roll?
Putting on it.
Item number four, approval of the agenda. I'd like to, before we make an approval of the agenda, I'd like to ask if we could move item number seven after item number 12, the planning and engineering reports.
I support.
Any discussion? I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda for Thursday, December 14, 2017, for the Charter Township of Oxford, regular planning commission meeting.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Curtis, supported by Mr. Spitz. Is there any discussion on the motion?
That's as amended.
As amended, yeah, okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item number five, approval of the minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the regular planning commission meeting minutes for November 9, 2017.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Curtis, supported by Mr. Spitz. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I've asked for copies of it, and I haven't been able to get it. It's my numerous request, so I haven't been able to look at them.
Okay.
I'd like to abstain from voting on that.
Copy's of the minutes for November 9?
Yes.
Different from what's in the packet?
I didn't get the packet. I got a broken stick. I've been getting here three times this week asking for it. Still haven't got a copy.
Call or roll? Call the question?
Yes.
Okay, those opposed? Or, sorry. Close the favor of the motion as presented.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ms. Rosner abstained. Item number six, public comments not scheduled for public hearing around this agenda. Is there anyone out in the general public wishing to speak?
Yes, sir.
Are you supposed to abstain? It's gotta be either yes or no. Abstaining is only with the consent of the planning commission.
Do the order, thank you.
Just so you know, he thinks I can't have it.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to item number eight, public hearings. Public hearing for rezoning of approximately 4.5 acre parcel number 0435-20005. Currently zoned R1, single family, 12,000 square feet minimum to R Recreation. The subject property 0435-20005 is located on the south side of East Drainer Road, adjacent to Oxford Hills Golf Course. The applicant or property owner, Charter Township of Oxford, 300 Dunlap Road, Oxford, Michigan, 48371. Is the applicant here? Well, let me open the, I'd like to make a motion to open that public hearing at 7:04. I'll second. Okay, there's a motion to open the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry. I was gonna ask the petitioner to present his case. Is it? I'm only human. So you withdraw? J.C. means Jack Curtis. Okay, so you withdraw that, correct? So, is the petitioner here?
Yes.
Please come up to the lectern, state your name, position, and basically what's your, your...
I'm Joe Ferrari, I'm Oxford Township Treasurer, here representing the township. The township filed a deed on this property because it's been going on for a couple of years, probably since the 80s, as to whether the parcel exists or not, what acreage is. After we came to survey, come out, we realized that the parcel does exist. Those are lots of acres and what we thought. Township ended up selling the property that happened probably three or four weeks ago to Mr. Hubbard for Oxford Hills, and is going to combine with the rest of his golf course. Basically, it's just a ministry cleanup that should probably have been done in the 80s.
Okay, thank you. Now, I'll move to open the public hearing at 7:05 to hear and receive public comments on the proposed rezoning. Support. Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Curtis, seconded by Mr. Noel. Is there anyone in the public wishing to speak on this matter?
Yeah.
Okay, seeing none, I look through. Motion, close? I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Seconded by Mr. Noel, seconded by Ms. Rosner. So, do we have any comments from the planners? In votes, had votes to close the public hearing. The public hearing, correct. Oh, I'm sorry, those in favor. I saw, okay, those opposed. Really sorry, must be that on the day. Okay.
Yeah, now we'll go. This is a fairly straightforward rezoning request. It's about a four and a half acre parcel, south of Drainer Road, east of Lapeer. The township currently owns the property but is intending to sell it to the Oxford Hills Golf Course. The remainder of the golf course is zoned R recreational. The recreational zoning request is consistent with adjacent land uses as well as the master plan. However, the minimum for the R district is five acres, and this parcel is approximately four and a half. So to remedy this issue, the applicant, being the township, with consent from the Oxford Hills Golf Course, has offered several voluntary conditions. The first condition is that the subject parcel will be transferred to the Oxford Hills Golf Course, at least within the application and known as B-A-R-D. And then the second condition, after the transfer, the subject parcel will be combined with the Oxford Hills Golf Course, putting it well above the five acre minimum. PC, as I always say, PC should be aware, the planning commission should be aware that the recreation district, if it is rezoned, all of the uses, whether by right or as a special land use, will be permitted for this parcel. However, as I said before, the rezoning and the voluntary conditions are acceptable, at least in terms of the master plan and the zoning ordinance. And this is, the motion will be a recommendation to the township board.
Correct. Let's just say, anybody recognize anything else from anything in the packet in reference to... I don't think there's any fire teams got against it, correct? Any other comments from the commissioners? No.
No, I think it's a good way just to get it cleaned up. They thought it was over seven plus acres. They really thought it was 4.7. It hasn't been on the books for taxes or anything, so this is a good way to get it back.
Correct. Anyone else? I move that the planning commission recommended the township board approval of the proposed rezoning from R1, single-family residential, 12,000 square foot minimum, to R Recreation, parcel number 04-35-200-005, 4.517 acres, with conditions voluntarily proposed by the applicant in the signed letter dated November 16, 2017 as follows. Number one, the subject parcel will be transferred to B-A-R-D. Number two, after transfer, the subject parcel will be combined with the Oxford Hills Golf Course property, parcel number 0435-200-001, to meet the minimum lot size standards for the R district. Applicant, Charter Township of Oxford, 300 Dunlap Road, Oxford, Michigan, 48371. This recommendation of approval is based upon the findings that the proposed rezoning and voluntary conditions meet the requirements of section 18.3 and 18.5 of the zoning ordinance and are consistent incompatible with the master plan, adjacent zoning districts, and adjacent land uses. This recommendation of approval is further conditioned upon the no following conditions. End of motion. I'll second it. Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Curtis, supported by Mr. Spitz. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Let's move to public hearings, number B. The purpose of the public hearings is to receive public comments on proposed special land use for an automotive or RV sales establishment. Subject is section 6.13, location 583, south of Lapeer Road, some east side of Lapeer Road, south of Minnetoka Drive, and north of Oakdale Street, within the Township of Oxford, Michigan, parcel ID number 04303-002, and 0426-303-003, in the C2 commercial, general commercial zoning district. Is the petitioner here? You would state your name and just basically what you're planning on doing?
Sure. My name's Rich Skelnick. I have the Clean Cars business on 157 South Washington. We've been there since 1999, basically for quite a while. I've been in the business now since my father started the Ford dealership in '64, Skelnick Ford down in La Torre. We're moving across the street to the Burger King site strictly for growth, in a newer We have another location in Emily City, and we're planning on moving that location down to Oxford also. So basically, we're doubling our businesses. The general reason why we're moving across the street. Also, my landlord, I don't know if you know, Charlie Allen passed away, and he's sold the property. I think he's gonna be, somebody's gonna be coming to you for a development, I'm pretty sure. Or, no, that's the village, I'm sorry. That's right, that's the village. But what we do at Clean Cars is we sell used cars, and we finance the cars at our location. We don't do any service work for customers, no parts sales or any body shop type work. We're strictly putting cars on a lot, we wash them, we sell them, and we finance them. Like I say, I'm moving across to the Burger King. I've got some renderings here of what our plan of the building is, if you wanna take a look at those. Our plan is to renovate the location, keeping the footprint exactly the same, basically, except we're gonna be ripping off the front of the atrium there. There's a broken down atrium there that has been there for quite some time. It's been vacant for a few years, I'm sure you folks are aware of that. We're gonna have wash stalls in the back, two wash stalls in the back, and then sales and accounting offices in the front. Will probably be 60% office space. We plan on adding a few more square feet of paving, but other than that, you know, cleaning the place up, new siding, new interior, but not anything dramatic on the process. We store cars is really what we do on the premise. We don't have a lot of foot traffic or car traffic. Nowadays, the internet takes a lot of the shopping out of the process. When a customer comes to us, they basically know what they're looking for, car they're looking for, and we actually process a lot of their paperwork online today. So our process of a customer years ago, like we used to call it kicking tires, it's not really done today. So our traffic count is, that'll be minimum, they ask for an hourly number of what we expect for traffic count, and we go by how many we get in a day, not really by how many we get in the hours. We can go a day or two without talking to a customer, quite honestly, in our business. It's just the way it is. So we don't have a large traffic count on the business itself. We show that we have nine employees when we bring our other ones too from Emily City. We'll have nine total employees, and we have a couple, three, four, part-time drivers that we use also. So even our employee count is somewhat minimal. But what we do is we store a lot of cars, and that's why I need some extra payment on the lot, on the property. I'll put $600,000, $650,000 worth of cars out there. We're not really, you guys have ordinances for outside storage? We're not really outside storage, we're, we've got cars. They're clean, they're all in straight lines, they're not like bags of salt ripped out in front on the side of the road, which right across the street has been an occasion to see. We don't do that. With that type of money involved, I protect those cars. I don't want, you know, people going in and out of there. There's a lot of money invested in them. We light it well. It's a step up, I would say, as far as that Burger King situation that's going on now. You know, we've been raskings for some, a bit of a variance, we hope you guys can help us on it. We feel that's what's necessary for us to make it successful, and we have our architect, James, here, and attorney David. If there's any questions you have out of any of us, we'll gladly answer them for you.
All right, our first step, Mr. Scott, like, we're not gonna be able to refute this as a commission. It sits in our packet first. I mean, we'll look at them, but you can't take them under consideration. Yeah, they look great. So what we're first gonna do is talk about the special land use, and then later on, when we get past that, in the agenda, we're gonna go over your actual site plan. And that's when maybe some of those specials about the architecture and that sort of thing. So. What's that?
Dave wanted me to mention, we have about four customers a day, our customer count, but, you know, I can't tell you how accurate that really is, but it's not a lot.
Okay, I'll look for, yes, Jack? I make a motion to open the public hearing to receive public comments on the special land use for the automobile RV sales establishment, 583 South Lapeer Road, at 7:17 PM. It's been moved by Mr. Curtis, supported by Mr. Spitz. Is there any discussion? I mean, all in favor of the motion, I get ahead of myself every time. Those opposed? Okay, public hearing is open. Is there anyone in the public wishing to speak on the special land use? Opposed? Okay, seeing none? I'll make a motion to close the public hearing at 7:18 PM. I'll second. It's been moved by Mr. Curtis, seconded by Mr. Noel. Any discussion on the motion? None? Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Is there discussion from the commission on special land use? Matt, you have anything?
Yeah, I'll be quick, get right to it. So this is a request for an automobile sales establishment, which is permitted as a special land use in the C2 district. It's subject to the findings of fact criteria for special land uses in section 4.5. Generally, based on its location along Lapeer Road, and based on the master plan designation for Village Commercial, we do find that an automobile sales establishment is appropriate in this location. The big issue is the setbacks. This falls under, automobile sales establishments fall under section 6.13 of the zoning ordinance, which is storage and display areas, and that includes automobile sales. And number one, the first criteria of that section is that outdoor storage and display areas have to meet the front, side, and rear yard setbacks of the district. So the applicant, can you pull up the site plan and make it a little easier just to visualize this? For the most part, the existing parking lot is going to be used for both inventory storage as well as employee and customer parking. But there are some areas, new areas that are being proposed, it's the dark gray areas to the... So that's to the north, so this is looking, the top of your screen here is east, so north is to the left side of the screen. That gray, the gray area, or that area there is the parking lot, and then to the east side, I'm sorry, the west side of the building, to the bottom of the building. So that's gonna be new.
That's the north, I'm pretty sure.
North, and that's the west side of the building. Yeah. So those are gonna be new inventory parking areas. So because they, this use falls under the outdoor storage section, both the side and rear, side and front yard setbacks are deficient. We also know that some of the existing parking area is being converted to inventory storage. So on the very south end of the site, as well as a portion in the northeast portion of the site, that's gonna be converted to inventory parking, which, again, under section 6.13 says it has to meet the required side yard setback, which is 30 feet in this district. So a variance would be necessary. That's really the only issue we have with the special land use. That comes up again with preliminary site plan as well, but due to its proximity to adjacent parcels, it's five feet off the property line, actually, I think in some areas it's zero feet off the property line, variances would be necessary from the zoning ordinance. We have more issues, minor issues, technical details with the preliminary site plan, but we can address those later on in the agenda.
Okay, so just to be clear, this is existing?
Yeah, that's existing, that, what the mouse is down.
Existing.
That's not, that's a grass, that's a grass lawn.
This here is existing.
Yeah.
This here?
That there is a, is a currently a grass lawn, and then...
This here is existing.
That's existing, but to the, at the bottom of the screen, that parking to the bottom of the screen, that's a glass, atrium, glass atrium, and another lawn. So that's gonna be converted into new parking areas, for new inventory storage areas.
That's the landscape plan, if you scroll down, it's a little easier to see.
Yeah, there's one that has it denoted in gray.
Yeah, if you scroll up one more page, there's, it's a little bit easier to see.
Oh, one of them?
Yeah, that one, yeah, that one, well, actually, it's not.
It's just so good. Nonetheless, still the same areas that are gonna be converted, so. That'll take any questions that you have?
Well, I have one question. I mean, there's that dotted line that runs right there, kinda like, right where the parallel, I guess it's angular parking on the west side. So everything that's, if you look at the screen, I'll say below that or further west, where's the road right of way line on that property? Is that what that line is right through there? I tried to pull it out to 150%, I just couldn't find it.
Talking about the Lapeer?
Yeah, Lapeer, 24 road right of way line. Where's it actually at on that drawing? Can you help us out? Yeah, thank you.
My name's James Klinker, I'm with Noel Confress. Actually, the civil engineer, forget Richard calling me an architect, but...
Okay, that's quite all right.
If you look at the, there's a dark line, right there, there's a round circle.
A little further out?
Right where that car is at right now, that is the road right of way.
That's my road right of way. So between that road right of way line and then where that angular parking is to the west there, and, you know, each side of the drive and whatnot, what is that, what's that space in between right now?
That would be a, that will be a green, green.
How many feet is that?
That's, I think we have it at 25.
That'll be about 25 feet of greenbelt right through there.
And if you go, if you was to look back at the landscape plan, what we're planning on doing was, because there's a requirement for landscaping along the road right of way, but obviously, he wants to showcase his cars.
Yeah, I could say that, I mean, man.
So we wanna put the trees at the far north and south end of the...
I see the trees over there on the one corner.
And any trees that would be lacking, that would be required for the frontage, we've moved into the site, so there's no deficiency in any of the landscaping that's...
Well, his showroom is actually the parking lot. I mean, if it was a furniture store, I'd be inside, but he's outside.
Yeah.
I get it, he wants to sell cars. I think he just needs a variance based on the idea that the zoning district he's in and the type of sale.
That's exactly it.
And the type of sale he's trying to do, so we could still make recommendations for approval based on creating a variance.
Yeah, you can make that a condition. I'm just reading right out of 6.13, it's titled, "The Open Air Businesses and Outdoor Sales and Display of Products." So it goes on, "Open air businesses shall include blah, blah, blah," it doesn't say blah, 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 but it's... Shall include but not limited to the following uses, automobile, truck, trailer, motorcycle, recreational vehicle, jet ski, and watercraft sales.
Yeah.
So it falls under that, and the first letter, A, "Storage and Display Areas Shall Not Be Permitted in the Front Yard Setback," which is here 35 feet, they have 25, so it's a 10% difference.
Yeah, I think that's pretty good.
It's simply, you know, a variance from the ZD, and given that, given that it's an existing site, I think it seems pretty favorable that I get it.
I don't have a problem.
Just reading from, straight from the ordinance.
Who would be the one to answer if there's gonna be improvements in lighting on this property? The only thing I care about is if there's intrusion into the roadway.
Yeah, there is a phormetric plan that was prepared.
I saw it too, I just had a hard time pulling up the, so it'll be, it'll comply with requirements with...
It'll comply, I think there might have been...
How many foot panels we have off the property?
Yeah, I think there was a little bit of, because it was something that we put together quickly at the end, I think there might be a little bit where it doesn't quite meet it, but it's something that we would be able to take care of.
Well, I have it in front of me, so there's numbers everywhere all over on it, but, okay, so you'll follow the ordinance criteria, I would see the problem.
Mr. Chair?
As noted in our December 4 review, being this special land use portion of it, we wrote this is zoning issue, so we have no comments on that. We do have a few comments once we get to the preliminary site.
The site plan, okay.
Yep.
Chief, anything?
Point.
Okay.
The sign, replacement of the sign?
The current site plan or special use? About the use or the site plan?
It's not gonna continue right there. Replacement doesn't continue with this use?
The current placement of the sign?
Yeah.
Are you guys, are you saying a new sign or...
It'll be a new sign. We actually really just, there's no details for the sign yet, just given the general area of where it's at. I think we were encroaching a little bit by a few feet, but that's something we can take care of again, you know, when we get into engineering and the final site.
Just wanna make sure all the little tail.
That was one of just our technical comments in the site plan.
Yeah, I wasn't sure where it would come in.
It's kinda confusing because preliminary site plan and special land use are related.
Yeah.
But, so I think that the setback issue is really applicable to both. The minor issues with, you know, the number of trees, the sign setback, that can be addressed later on.
Mr. Hall?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify a comment that Mr. Skelnick made earlier. When you said no service on the cars, you're not even changing tires, you're not putting new tires on the car, nothing like that?
We do minor stuff, but not for customers. Like if we get a flat tire on the lot, you know, we would do something like that.
Right, but oil changes or anything like?
No.
No? No. So really no grease issues or anything like that to...
Well, I mean, there's, we wash cars.
Yeah, but I'm not, I'm talking about working on the cars.
Well, the process of washing the car, actually, there's products that we use, you know, they're all biodegradable products, but, because some of the cars that we wash are pretty dirty. They, we take, it's called reconditioning a car, so we take a car with, you know, some of my cars have 125,000 miles on them. That car's dirty, so that process we do, but any repairs to the cars are done at Skelnick's, and our customer repairs are done at Skelnick, and I have a location up in Emily City that repairs them. So we don't do any, I don't have to have a license or anything like that for any of the work that I do. Basically, people do the same thing in the garage. I've gotta say, for a special land use, you know, my opinion is that the current site as is isn't that great. I think you're gonna limit the amount of cars that go in and out of there a day compared to... Oh, yeah, we're not allowed to be in there, so for me, it's... Of course, he must not have had a lot, he went broke. Can't say anything but that. Okay, any other comments, commissioners? Questions? Okay. I move that the planning commission grant special land use approval to permit an automobile sales establishment, location 583 South Lapeer Road, parcel ID 0426-303-002, and parcel number 04-26-303-003, in the C2 General Commercial Zoning District, applicant Clean Cars Incorporated. This approval is... This approval is based upon the following findings. Number one, the proposed special land use meets the finding of facts criteria contained in Section 4.5 of the zoning ordinance. The proposed automobile sales establishment meets the special provisions for outdoor sales and display of products contained in Section 6.13 of the zoning ordinance. Further, this approval is conditioned upon seeking and obtaining dimensional variances from the zoning board of appeals, end of motion.
I'll second. Then moved by Mr. Curtis, seconded by Mr. Noel. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Move on to item nine, unfinished business, which there is none, which brings us to item 10, new business, final site plan for Oxford Commons. Just a petitioner here, if so, if you come up to the lectern, give us your name and a brief review of what the status is with the final site plan.
Hi, I'm Matt Ray, architect. Emphasis on architect, not civil engineer.
That's you.
It's not. You can sit down. But we reviewed the findings from Carlisle Ward, and we, you know, agree with everything with one exception to the banking of parking spaces. We think that there's gonna be peak times during lunch and dinner where Lille's Corner Island will probably use more than the 40 spaces allotted by your ordinance, and we would like to keep what we have on the site plan. I think that's the only outstanding issue we have, and if there's any else, I'm glad to answer your questions. Respectfully, request your approval.
Well, Mr. Chair?
Are you, you're showing, you're showing about six right now on the one. From what I've, you know, by the time someone's ordering signage and then where they pick up and whatnot. Mike?
That's a drive-through restaurant, I didn't refer that.
Well, just a stacking part.
Yeah, you're okay with that. We moved the menu board sign up to space two, so there wouldn't be a gap between one and two on order. That's not a problem, but the other comment was for land banks and parking in the back, and we don't feel that's a good idea right now.
Oh, then where the 15 was, which is really only 13? Okay, I counted those out earlier. I wasn't here, I wasn't here. Yeah, so I, you have to bear with me, I'm catching up a little bit. I looked at most of it today. You got the traffic where the tire is and it comes up and there's a boulder that's supposed to be placed near a rear door exit there?
Here.
Yeah, right there, that's a good, you're really good. How far away is that? I mean, I got a plan on it too, I just.
I think graphically, it's about five feet away from the boulder.
The boulder itself?
Yes.
You're the architect, so you are the one involved in the building concept, right?
Yes.
Would you be opposed to maybe putting a little indent where those doors come out, so that when you first walk out, you wouldn't walk right into that laneage of traffic that would be coming through there, if there was a car that accelerated off there?
That puts an indent.
Well, like, you know, sometimes they'll recess that door back a little bit, so when the door actually opens, the door doesn't swing out into the actual laneage itself for people to walk through. It's common sometimes, long drive areas, you know, within buildings. And I'm only making a comment, because we have a lot of people that seem to walk out and don't always pay attention sometimes when they first leave a building, looking. We have done other things where we would have like a little railing effect up that would make them then turn and walk sideways after they went through the doorway, so they couldn't walk directly into a line of traffic. That was my only thing on the, I mean, I looked at the plan, I liked where you're coming in with a shared drive and everything else with it.
We have moved that door south as far as we can in that.
Often, maybe what would be the considered space that would be leased there. Yeah, I noticed that too, you read at the edge of that line for the wall on the inside, for the interior concept of what would be leased.
The only other option, where you put a curb in, that kind of kicks the car out.
I wouldn't mind a curb if it's possible, if you think you have a, has a comment from my, from my own personal opinion, I guess, of what I've experienced in the past with other building locations, that's all. You have laneage where you have traffic actually running northbound, then you got the drive-through traffic coming out southbound, so someone could come through there and someone could be walking out all at the same time. I just, it's like something a little bit right there to kind of transition to where. The other ones are far enough away, I mean, that's like a loading area where it's all crowded there? Is that what, that's kind of well called in one spot? That was my only problem the whole time.
Mr. Curtis?
I just wanted to get a commitment from the applicant, that we were gonna either recess the door or curb it, so that someone doesn't walk out into traffic.
Put a curb in.
So sweep out?
Yeah, so a curb will be installed at rear service door.
Well, I think what he's gonna do is where the window itself is for pickup, he'll sweep it out from there, right?
There and cover part of the space for.
See, they don't walk right into a sidewalk, they walk right onto the parking area, right? The parking lot itself is what they walk out to.
Right.
And that's a different issue too, if it's a small sidewalk or something, first with a curb level or, but you're not elevating the building up and down from that parking space. Yeah.
I don't know what that word is though.
A curb will be installed at rear.
As long as he, a curb should be, shall be installed to guide the drive-through traffic away from the exiting of the adjacent rear doors. Exiting door. It'll still have a boulder.
Yes.
Otherwise, he could run into the building. The curb's probably better to make him a wheel at least kind of go that way.
Yes. Hit the driver's.
It can ruin someone's alignment, and Rich can realign it for him.
I don't do that.
Well, you do if the dealership.
Okay, Matt, you mentioned the banking of the spaces, is there anything else you report that should be noted about the final site?
No, and the banking was just, you know, any opportunity we can have, we have to try to promote less impervious payment, you know, we always try to bring it up, but there's nothing in the ordinance that sets a maximum or maximum number of parking spaces, so.
Can I make one more comment, Mr. Chair?
No. Yes, sir.
Well, I mean, I'll read in my hand, but I don't want to cut Matt off, but. Is it possible, I mean, in my own reality of how I see a lot of people when I go visit places, to have a couple more barrier-free parking spaces in the front? You have four located right now, with four eights with a five in between the twos like that. I mean, when you get closer to the actual northern, I mean.
More hands, yeah.
Well, it depends on the use, see, here's what's gonna happen, it depends on what he leases those spaces out as, as to the use classification and what those occupant loads become inside would vary what he would need on the outside. Right, so you took it off of 11,000 something plus feet and.
Yeah, it's based on his number of parking.
Number of parking, it's based on our ordinance by the use and classification. So you only had to have four?
Correct.
Is it possible for a couple more? I have to ask.
Can they be on the side? In the backyard parking, near the end of the sidewalk?
Well, I really don't like, I don't like them walking across the, when they're closer to the building, it's better, I'll just admit it, so. The corners are, you got two of them, you got four now, I see where they're located, I can see a plane state from here, even when I pull up on my own, but. I just meant, I think four are gonna get used a lot more in the future than what people realize. Hopefully, the place will be very successful.
All the spaces in the front are available, if they're open.
Well, I guess.
You got a handicap sticker.
You're gonna say, you're drawn by ordinance, and that's what, and just ask a question. He complies with the ordinance.
He, I could address that. The ordinance, our ordinance is based on the ADA requirements, so for the number of parking spaces proposed, that 123 four are required.
Right, that complies to the.
He complies with, yeah, our zoning.
Just asking if it would be able to.
Mr. Chair, you had something for the site plan?
As far as the site plan goes, we discussed most of it at preliminary. You know, there's sewer available on the site, they're gonna be extended connecting to the existing 12-inch water line on the west side of 24 for a fire hydrant. I guess we really have no issues with that. The applicant actually has submitted their engineering plans, and there are a few minor cleanup issues on that, but they were developed enough that, you know, we're pretty comfortable with this for site plan. And so we would recommend approval of this for site plan.
Okay, Mr. Curtis?
I just had a question for Mr. Chair. In the paving, they were gonna pave around those test wells, and then?
Yes, they're shown to be concreted, actually. They're gonna be.
There's some township test wells there that are exposed right now. In preliminary, they said they would pave around it.
Monitoring wells that we look use for, to monitor the water quality for aquifers, since we have our own municipal well system here. There's also an existing well on the site that they're going to abandon, an old domestic well.
I just didn't see the engineering documents yet, I don't.
Yes, okay. Chief, you had an item?
Just the Knox box on each unit.
So each?
Each unit will have an address to each unit as opposed to just all one address.
Okay.
Okay, so we gotta add a Knox box.
Well, it's code required anyway, Chief, I mean, you wanna go it that way without, you just wanna make sure it's on?
I do, because I don't wanna get to the point where all of a sudden it just shows us one address.
Yeah, yeah.
As it opens the CD.
Right, sure. Hey, Mr. Hullett?
Do, are we not concerned whether, or do we care about, we talked about any other sides of the passers?
I'm sorry?
On the other side of 24, we discussed that, on this side of 24, like between him and Tractor Supply?
See, easement's in place. The issue on the last meeting was, it wasn't noted on the plan, but it does exist, and it has been added to the drawings.
Preliminary was brought up.
Yeah, can I ask Mr. Hullett what's your question?
Well, I thought we were, on the other side of 24, we were encouraging the passers going from one establishment to the other if the.
You're talking about an access drive?
Yeah, if the, if the properties allow for it, and if.
Right, like what we have in the buyers and now that we have.
I just thought we were encouraging that, I'm not.
We have one in place.
You're talking about eliminating their driveway, or? I mean, there is an easement in place, that was part of the development with Tractor Supply, so there is a cross-access easement between these two parcels already in place. It's a recorded document.
So, I'm sorry, I'm asking, is.
It's the property of the north.
Right.
He started with property of the north.
Well, no, Tractor Supplies would be to the south.
What do you wanna do with it?
Well, like, if you're in Tractor Supply, if you're coming off 24, instead of having to worry about going into multiple drives, you're going to one side, you can drive right across the front of the two buildings?
That's denoted on the plan, there is an access drive that will be.
Well, I, okay, I don't see it.
You can see it there, that's just.
Sure, my, my printout copy is not.
I agree, but is there no future for anything that would happen to the north?
The north, the north is a golf course.
Total golf course, there's no property there.
There's no property, butts right up to the golf course.
I have no questions.
Anything else? Commissioners? Okay.
Okay, I move that the planning commission approve the final site plan for Oxford Commons, location 595 North Lapeer Road, parcel number 04-22-151-005, Zone C2, commercial, general commercial, applicant P E L J Properties LLC. This approval is based upon the finding that the final site plan meets a criteria for final site plan approval contained in Section 12.5 of the zoning ordinance. Further, this approval is conditioned upon a curb will be installed, a curb shall be installed to drive traffic away from the rear existing exiting door. Number two, an Knox box will be installed for each leased unit. And number three, each leased unit will be assigned an address number, end of motion.
Support. It's been moved by Mr. Curtis, seconded by Mr. Berger.
I did have additional questions, Mr. Chair.
Is there any additional discussion on the motion?
It may be in the plans, I just didn't see it, but as for your islands, I see you're putting sodded grass in there? Are you having irrigation on each one of those islands?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Pre-zonings and special land use require a roll call vote. We just moved to resend our voice votes for the special land use and the pre-zoning and per on a roll call vote for those identical much as twice. Yeah, but it's still to match, required to be roll call, or?
They're unanimous?
Yeah.
I didn't mind doing a roll call.
Roll call and do a roll call vote, I don't know, but I just know it's required. It's in our files.
Under respect for land use.
Yeah. For nobody who's a road.
And for reasons.
For zoning and special land use require a roll call vote.
For both of those issues, is the commission, is it your favorite to call roll call for both of them at once?
I would reference, since it would be considered a yes.
I agree with Mr. Spitz. What did Mr. Spitz say, I didn't hear?
Since it was unanimous, that we would each be considered as a yes and a roll call versus doing a separate roll call for each item.
I agree.
So moved. I agree. I do it.
Just officially, we need to.
Yeah, I have a problem with officially.
On the record, I think we all agree that the rule of the roll call, me then as opposed to this.
Okay.
Each name has a yes next to it. Moving on to item number B, preliminary site plan for clean cars. I believe we heard from the applicant, is there anything else the applicant wants to add in reference to the site plan? There were some notes made, I think, from the planner. Is there anything else you need to address? Or any of his notes that you didn't address earlier? Otherwise, we'll just have the discussion here from the planner.
I don't think there were.
Anything else to add, Matt?
Uh, no, just those technical details, the applicant did bring up that parking, parking count that I requested, that was just simply to get an idea of how many spaces. Anytime we can get less parking spaces than required, that's, we'll take it. So I have no opposition to the number of parking spaces proposed. In terms of landscaping, our zoning ordinance does require two additional ornamental trees in the front yard greenbelts. Those can be clustered where the other trees and bushes are proposed. We know that the applicant wants to promote and advertise the cars, so we got no opposition of just putting those trees in the same location, and that's on the southern side of the property. The safety path does need to be denoted adjacent to Lapeer Road on the site plan. Whether or not they want to request the payment in lieu of option, that can come later, but either way, the safety path doesn't need to be shown. The sign setback issue, once again, it's deficient by two feet, but the applicant stated that it was just preliminary at this point. And then the last item we had was the illumination levels are exceeding ordinance limits along the property lines. An illumination plan and a photometric plan were required at preliminary site plan stage, however, based on what they're showing, it does exceed the maximum book candle level. And then during final site plan review. And then during final site plan review, we do have a green belt standard, so we have green belt, minimum green belt width. Uh, given the, that the site is currently improved, that green belt width cannot be met, however, the ordinance does allow a waiver to be granted by the planning commission.
Mr. Sharp?
Yeah, regarding, uh, our letter of December 4th, um, for this site plan approval, site grading, the sanitary sewer, the water distribution, that's all adequate. Um, we did have some comments regarding the storm sewer, and I believe that their engineer can correct that during the future submissions with regards to the types of materials and some, uh, calculations, but those are not even required at this stage, so they'll be able to address those. Um, as Matt said, the safety path should be shown. We did provide a cost estimate in your packets, um, and the applicant should have that, should they choose to do an in lieu of contribution there. And the only other comment I had, uh, which didn't actually show in our letter, is that this is two parcels, and I don't know if it would be moved, uh, the applicant or to, to possibly combine those into one larger parcel?
That is being done, yeah.
That is being done.
It is done. That application's going to...
Okay, I know that we had talked about that and so that would, that would clean it up too, and the whole thing would be under one parcel number then instead of the two, so that's, that's nice to hear. But, uh, again, we would be in favor of the, uh, recommending preliminary site plan approval.
Chief? Nothing else?
I, I do have one question regarding what Jim had talked about and, uh, Matt had talked about the, um, pathway. Uh, Rich just had a, uh, I mean, we can show that obviously, but my question is, um, there's an understanding that in the future, uh, near future, that MDOT is gonna come through here and do some type of, um, repairs or some type of widening of the road. So, uh, what Rich was, uh, concerned with was if he was to put the sidewalk in, you know, MDOT comes through, and I told him that, you know, in past experience, if MDOT comes in, tears out something, they replace it. So, but my question would be, because I, I really think that, uh, with the overall construction, you might be able to get that done, you know, save for, say, eight or $10,000. You save a few thousand dollars. When MDOT comes back through again, I just wanna make sure that there was assurance that you wouldn't have to pay again to have it put in, because if MDOT came through there, you know what I'm saying?
No, it wouldn't, and we would certainly want the applicant to either put the safety path in or do a cash in lieu of, because this project was originally scheduled for 2018, then it got delayed to 2019. Now it's, now it's been delayed to 2020. So who knows what's gonna happen in the future, so we would, the township either needs the safety path put in or, uh, contribution, and yes, MDOT, anything that they take out would be responsible. He would not, he would not have to pay twice for it.
Yeah, that, that, so I think that answers this question, I guess.
Commissioner Rosner brought it up earlier relative to the signage. The current signage for the Burger King sign is intent to knock that sign down and move it to a new location, if I understand the plans correctly, because it's shown, each plan is slightly different. It shows the old sign and then it shows a new sign. So I just wanted to...
The first one you're looking at is what's existing, right?
Yeah, but we're, yeah, that sign's going away.
Yeah, what you're talking about, there's a, there's an existing conditions, uh, then there's a demo plan, it shows that to be moved. And then the next plan shows what would be in place after.
Okay, thank you.
And that sign forms a...
The, the location that was provided in the preliminary plan was deficient by two feet, but the applicant had understood, from what I understand, you guys understand, has to be moved back two feet, so whatever's shown, yeah, whatever's shown on the final site plan just needs to conform with that 15-foot setback.
Where the sign was before, you couldn't see it.
Right.
Just...
Oh, the Burger King sign?
Yeah.
Yeah, horrible place.
You could not see it until you were already there. It needed to be farther north. It was, uh...
Yeah, we recognize that. Thank you.
Mr. Gold?
You've talked more automotive, the special land uses for automotive and RV. Do you have any intent or any thoughts on RV type of, uh, sales here as well?
No. Well, I mean, I could.
Right.
If I find a way to make money at it, yeah. You bet.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
I just pulled up the satellite map and, um, I'm on the safety path committee, even though, uh, we, we would seek that the path be put in, because right now, even on the satellite photographs, you can see the goat paths going through there from the people walking on the grass, plus the building next to it, the Caldwell Banker has put theirs in, so we're just trying to loop it in. If MDOT ever does decide to do any M24 work, they would be responsible to replace it, they tore it out. So, I, I would ask that you put it on the plan and install it, please.
Okay.
That's my only question.
Anything else? Seeing none, I'd look to, um...
David McDonald, Warren Cross. So, we would just ask that under that 8.5 L, like you guys would consider the parking being produced at the 16 spots? I think you kinda talked about that, Chief. Yeah, yeah, I mean, I have no problem with the amount of parking that's proposed. Um, we just, I just was unsure about how much traffic, daily traffic, you guys are anticipating, so we wanna make sure that you can accommodate that, uh, with the 16 spaces that you have. And I think we have less employees than was reflected on that, plus the traffic's four per day, so...
Right.
No, you don't have to, I, I go through the mine overs a little bit.
Okay. I move that the planning commission approve the preliminary site plan for Clean Cars location 583 South Lapeer Road, parcel ID number 04-26-303-002, and parcel number 04-26-303-003 in the C2 General Commercial Zoning District. Applicant Clean Cars Incorporated. This approval is based upon the finding that the preliminary site plan meets the criteria for preliminary site plan approval contained in section 12.5 of the zoning ordinance. Further, this approval is conditioned upon the following. The applicant shall modify the location of inventory parking areas to meet the required act. Okay. The C can obtain the dimensional variances from the zoning board of appeals and any additional unresolved items from the planner's review dated December 5th, 2017, and any additional unresolved items from the engineer's review letter dated December 4th, 2017. End of motion.
Support. Been moved by Mr. Curtis, seconded by Mr. Spitz. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passed. Good luck, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
From the new business item number C, a pre-application conference, Oakwood Wedding Chapel. This the petitioner here? So, please come up to the lectern, state your name, and give us a general idea and put your proposal in.
Service spots, that's, uh, to the other side or... I guess we got room now that people have moved out of the... Please sit in here, Ann. On each side.
You could hold them up for Connie to get on camera first.
Yeah.
Oh, sure.
When you get to that point?
And just so you know, I think we discussed here...
Could you move this with, excuse me?
Kind of a general discussion, nothing's binding. We're just getting the flavor for what this commission has to say about what we're looking to do.
Could you move this easel? It's, it's blocking him this easel. Okay.
I guess while Ann's getting, uh, set up there, uh, if I could address the planning commission, that'd be great. Um, I just wanted to start out, uh, the, the Rupes have been in Oxford for about three generations now.
So your, your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry.
For the record, sorry.
My name is Jeff Papadellis. Uh, my address is 7460 Brookstead Crossing, Duluth, Georgia, 30097. Anne Marie Rup is my sister, uh, and I was also involved with this project as, uh, when we originally acquired the property back in 2001. Okay. Um, but as I just, just wanted to say that the, the Rupes have been here for three generations. Uh, they've been involved with the community quite a bit. Mr. Rup was at the fire department, uh, Chris's father, the, uh, brother and sister-in-law both teaching schools, and her son is also, uh, EMT and the fire department, and, uh, also coaches the high school football. So they've been, they've been a part of the township for quite a long time. Uh, this particular piece of property was purchased back in 2001, was it that?
Uh-huh. May 28th.
Uh, from Oakwood Community Church. Uh, since that time, uh, we've had other churches that have been in there. Uh, Ann is actually a, an ordained minister. Uh, we have all have had weddings, we've had funerals, a lot of things going on. Would actually come in here and we actually put this meeting together to go over a potential expansion of the church to include a, uh, place for wedding, wedding celebrations. Uh, we, we had a, we had a plan and we had some other things that we were gonna go over, uh, but after reading a view and some other information, it seems like we have some other issues that came up that we need to address first. One was on the, the zoning, I think that, uh, came up here. When we, we, we came in here, as it was in the early 2000s, uh, we had met with the planning commission, we have the board, uh, and we received approval under R1 zoning for a preschool center. Uh, we've had different meetings at different times, uh, with the planning commission and the board, uh, which has affirmed that R1 zoning. And somehow, over time, on a map, uh, it came up to be SF2. Um, I think that when we, uh, spoke with Matt, I was thinking to Matt, I said, "What a bright young man," and, and I thought, "What a bummer that I'm so old that 30-year a young man." Yeah, but we talked to, talked to Matt, uh, about it as well, uh, and if you take a look at the minutes, uh, there's been numerous occasions where it has been referred to as, as R1, and we've actually got special land uses under that zoning. Um, so, we'd like to clarify the actual zoning of the property, and I don't know if this is a place to do that or not. But, I mean, we've, we've had the property, it's always been that zoning, it's been noted in the minutes as that zoning, we've got special land use under that zoning, we've invested in, you know, preschool and finishing up the church's basement on that zoning. Uh, so I guess, I think that might be step one, I don't know. I'm here for your guidance.
Matt, for the commission, the zoning currently is on the property?
The, well, isn't, I go, I went through all of the minutes that we had on record. We had, you know, this property's been looked at multiple times for various uses, the preschool, different churches, and it was referred to as R1. We did have, find one letter from a, a previous zoning administrator stating that it was SF2. About the current zoning map, as well as, uh, zoning map from 2007, and I think I found one from 2003, all had this property as SF2. So I don't know if there was some clerical error along the way where the map just misrepresented the, the zoning of the parcel. The land use, a church is allowed as a special land use of both the R1 and the F and the SF2, so the, the use is not the problem, it's the lot size that becomes the problem, because SF2 has a larger minimum lot size requirement than R1. So I didn't know if, if the planning commission had any recollection of reviewing this parcel in the past, if this, this zoning issue had come up previously, because our official map has it as SF2.
You probably read through the log, is that correct?
Did it come up for variance at one point? I vaguely remember it, but I'm, uh...
Yeah, I have all of the, at least everything in the drive, you know, it's 100 pages, but there was CBA action on this, but it was referred to as R1 in, in those minutes.
Yeah, and I remember when we did it, it was listed as R1.
Yeah, the, the variance was for the depth of width issue, and it was based, the decision was based on R1. So I, I was just trying to figure out what tracer steps.
That's such that standards we used and were given at the time.
Yeah. So, you know, looking at the adjacent parcels, I think directly to the north are R1, so it makes sense that it would be R1, but I just don't know what happened with this map.
Which map are you looking at, I'm sorry?
The zoning map.
Which date is on that zoning map?
The current one is dated May 5th, 2017, but I pulled up, at our office, I pulled up older adopted maps from '07 as well as '03. Uh, Joe Ferrari actually found some in the basement from, I think, '03 that had it as SF2 as well. So I just, I don't know what happened along, along the way here.
What's the 71 show?
That's, our, our, every, every zoning map that I found has it as SF2.
So, it is a, it's a church?
Yes, it is.
It is?
Yes.
Oh, is it?
I have, I have a question.
Sure.
Um, in August 2010, Atkins, Neil and Alan sent an email about a religious exemption for 2740 North Baldwin Road, tax identification 0407101-017. As requested, I reviewed the materials provided to me regarding a request for religious real property tax exemption for Oakwood Ministries Incorporated, Oakwood. Is that what we're talking about?
That is it.
Okay, the applicant statue is MCL 211.7S, which provides houses of public worship, worship with the land on which they stand, the furniture they're in, and all rights in the pews and parsonage owned by religious society of this state and occupied parsonages are exempt from taxation under this act. Houses of public worship include buildings and facilities, religious societies used predominantly for religious services or teaching of religious truths, beliefs and societies. Thus, the test whether the petitioner is a religious society and whether the property used predominantly for religious services or for teaching religious truths or beliefs. The incorporation documents demonstrate that the petitioner is a religious society, however, no evidence has yet been submitted to satisfy the second part of this test. In our opinion, the materials that have been provided to date are insufficient to qualify this particular property for a religious exemption. Although there was general information regarding church services by Oakwood on the property they own in Ortonville, nothing was provided that indicates similar activities on the Oxford property. In order to qualify for the exemption, the petitioner will need to produce the information. Indeed, the materials provided seem to indicate the property was being used as for-profit basis for wedding activities. Uh, while that use does not automatically disqualify from religious exemption per MCL 211.7S, if the wedding use is predominant use of the property, then the property would not qualify. I also note that an appraisal of the property is provided. I did not review this in any particular detail, because it was specifically given to Oxford Bank, apparently in connection with a mortgage loan. Any statement with regard to religious use on the property contained in the appraisals are irrelevant and even as the value itself. I understand from our discussion that is virtually certain that the petitioner will seek exemption for 2011. Were you given that exemption?
We saw that letter the first time today.
Were you given an exemption for any years? So you are not a church?
We, we never were approved to be taxed exempt.
Okay. What we're asking tonight is if you're a church or if you're an assembly hall.
Okay.
Because R1 and SF2 require two different ordinances apply for the addition of a building of a partner.
And that's why I want, this is what I'm...
Right, that's what we're here to discuss.
Bringing, just bringing this in front of the planning commission, because I need guidance to, in the proceeding with this. I look at this parcel, I look at this property, and it's a wedding chapel.
Sure.
And there are certainly religious aspects to weddings, but our zoning ordinance has a definition for churches. My question is, does this use fit under our zoning definition for a church? If not, I would, uh, argue that it would fall under the other assembly hall use, which is not permitted in this zoning district.
And we, we brought information for that, Matt.
Sure, yeah, I just wanted to, to get, give the planning commission a, a, a why we're bringing this up.
Yeah, Matt asked the question to me, and I said, "Well, where's their tax exemption letter?" Well, we don't have one.
Sure.
So we are an assembly hall, we are not a church. We pay property tax, we are for-profit business, we are not a church, we're an assembly hall. These, these are the things that I'm hearing in making the decision on.
Sure.
I know the Rup family very well, uh, but I, I just, we're trying to do this based on facts.
Sure.
And the facts are, there's no assigned pastor, there's no regularly scheduled church worship services, there is taxes being paid on the property, they are not exempt qualifying them as a church. So in my mind, we're not a church.
I can appreciate that.
Matt's question is answered with those. Now, do you have anything else to present?
I do. First of all, thank you for reading that letter. You're a much better reader than I would be to go through all that.
I'm glad, ma'am. I'm glad, well...
I'm ready for water already.
I know, I need water too, actually.
I'll let everybody listen to him.
Today's the first day that we saw that letter. Ann actually did apply for the exemption back in 2009. If you notice, they referred to not Oakwood Ministries or not River of Life, who was the current church in there, they referred to Oakwood Community Church in a property in Ortonville. That is a church we bought it from back in 2001, they didn't practice there since that time. Since 2001, we've had several churches who have been in there. At this time, it was River of Life when we received this letter. If we'd have seen this letter, we'd have been back in front of them to show who was there, where there's actually been church services there held since Oakwood had moved out. We've had leases of churches that have been in there, we worship in there. It's not, it is not tax exempt. After reviewing this letter, we'll be going back after that. My understanding is, is tax exempt as a benefit of a church? Is it a requirement?
To be tax exempt?
Right. To my understanding, yeah. My understanding, it's definitely a benefit. Is it a requirement?
I'm not understanding your question.
Well, what I'm saying is, not being tax exempt, does that make us not a church? Because, is it a requirement, or is it a benefit being a church?
We, we, the zoning ordinance, there's nothing, the definition does not reference tax exempt statutes, if that's what you're asking.
The question posed to us was, which I'm asking you, are you a church or an assembly hall?
We're church. We're definitely a church.
You're a church, why are you paying taxes?
Because we were turned down at a tribunal, Ann had run out of capital to pursue it, she thought that she could not get it, and we didn't see this letter.
So according to the state, you are not a church?
According to the state, they did not have all the facts to give us an exemption. If you read the letter, they had spoke about Oakwood Community Church, and our property, we had no property in Ortonville. It was a missed information. And I'm not going to argue the point with you, but I guess I have some information to present too, which hopefully helps you understand the situation a little better. We got the letter, Ann had actually called the county when she read the reviews and some of the things that were going on, so we could get some more information. We do worship there, we've had other churches that have been worshiping and being there. They've had the traditional Sunday services that you have. We do not have a current church in there with Sunday services. We actually have a lease, the church was supposed to be there through next year, but they had financial difficulties and had to move. We're looking for another church to move in. Beyond that, we do worship there, my mother worships there. We invite people to worship there. We practice our faith in the church. You know, my grandmother had a church on her own property over in Greece, and she'd go up and they would, you know, serve tradition, have a church on their own property. Doesn't necessarily, you know, mean that, but we believe that weddings are worshiped as part of a religious ceremony. If somebody wanted to have a wedding and just get married, they could go to the Justice of the Peace, they could go to a chapel in Vegas that is not religious, but we hold the religious ceremonies. In fact, the pasture from Oakwood Community Church holds most all of our religious ceremonies for weddings. You know, some of the funerals too, I believe. You know, our faith believes that celebrations, receptions, get-togethers after a religious ceremony is part of a church, and there's been ongoing worship in this church for 63 years. So, I mean, to get the question whether it's a church or not, I believe that worship, religious activities support a church. I got the letter, I, you know, we were just dumbfounded, just like everything, that we wanted to get an opinion on it. Our council, Bob Davis, thought that we also had protection under the Religious Land Use and Institutional Persons Act, that I guess they call it RUPA, you know, as well as First Amendment, separation of church and state. I don't know, I just said, "What can I do?" He said that was it. Ann actually formed Oakwood Ministries. It's owned, Ann is Reverend Ann Marie Rup. She began an ordained minister. This was part of back in 2010, and the church is a place for families worship on a regular basis. We are a multi-dimensional church of religious groups who use our facilities. You got the mail? So we've had, you know, over the years, we've had Larry Hayward at Christ of King now, we've had Pastor Mark, we've had River of Life, we've had the Barn International Church, Act 43 Church, Love Inc. has seminars there sometimes, we have numerous prayer rituals, baptisms, women ministries come by and have seminars. It is certainly used for religious circumstances. We've got, I got mail here, we just got here, this is for the River of Life, and this is for Bam International Church, and I can't really give you, I guess I can't submit anything, you know, but you can see that, you know, we do have churches that are there and practicing. Excuse me, I need to read through all this, but it was a lot of information to cover.
But you're looking to actually construct a new building, correct?
We're looking to expand the church, yes.
Expand the church?
Yes.
So how often, John, just to bring it up, how often do you have regular assembly for worship there? Well, currently, we don't have a church in there, we're looking for another church.
So we have weddings on a regular basis, and we have funerals on a wedding of regular basis, which, you know, in our faith would be part of a religious ceremony. We use the facility ourselves, we have friends that come over and use it, and for most of the time that we've been there, we've also had churches who share a facility with us, and they hold Sunday services, and they hold weekly prayer meetings.
So when they share a facility with you, are they charged anything?
If they contribute, sure.
Is it voluntary, is there a set fee? Do they, do you have a set fee, or do...
Well, we would share the facility, sure they would, sure they would. Just like, you know, when I, any church or churches that I've been to before, if they have a facility that they're in, they pay a certain fee. I went to Journey Church, you know, before we had this down on Balden Road. They had a, you know, when I was talking to the pastor there, he said that the owner had actually given them the building to use, because he got a tax exempt, because the church was in the facility. Most pastors don't own their church. You know, when I was attending Hadley Church, the pastor didn't own it, you know, he was, you know, subject to the governing body. You know, so, yeah, if a church comes in and they're going to use the facility, you know, they pay part of the share. The facility has a mortgage, it has a lease, and, you know, they would expect to do so. You know, we also practice there, you know, not just the other church, we have weddings there, we pray there, you know, we utilize it, friends come there, we have groups that come in. And my understanding is that, you know, religious faith is not confined to, you know, what we might look at as a Sunday service every Sunday. There's hundreds of religions around the world, and I believe that, I believe, you know, the First Amendment, and then that says, "Practice your faith how you want to practice it." So...
I do have a question. You say it's expansion of the church, but it's not touching with church services, is it a completely new building? It's another chapel, or...
Yeah, this is a place for wedding celebrations after weddings, or funeral celebrations after funerals. If we needed to attach to the building, we could do so, if that would be more, I mean, whatever we do has to go through this commission. You know, whether you decide we're a church or not, you know, if you, I mean, if we say we're a church, you still have to approve what we do here. And so we were coming here for guidance to see what would be, you know, something that would be approvable through the city, or through the township.
Yeah, it's all of our definition of a church, that's right.
It's not our decision to decide if they're a church or not.
Correct.
I mean, we can't base our decision, or we can't decide first if they're a church or not, and then go forward from there.
Correct.
They're either a church by legal definition, or they're not.
Well, no, I would disagree. We have a definition of church in our ordinance, and we would be determining if it would meet that as well.
Well, sure.
Our ordinance defines a church, if they meet that definition, then they would be a church for our definition of the ordinance, in the ordinance.
What's our ordinance say it's a definition?
Our ordinance says a church is, that's why I asked that specific question. Church, this is in section 2 under definitions, "A building whereupon persons assemble regularly for religious worship, and is maintained and operated by an organized religious body, as well as those structures within a religious complex that, while ancillary, ancillary to the central location of worship, support regular assembly for worship. Churches include, but shall not be limited to temples, synagogues, and mosques."
Mr. Curtis?
My ambiguity there.
See, my question is, if the applicant believes they're a church, they should make application as a church. It's not up us to decide if they're a church or not. I agree. I know firmly rooted, rents the high school. I know people that use the old Goodwill store. I know people that use it out of their house. I know ministers that own bars. If the applicant comes to us and tells us they're a church, they're the ones making application. If we, this board or commission, I don't believe, should say, "Oh, yes, you're a church," or "No, you're not a church," I don't...
We, I guess I agree with Jack, is that we need to make sure that they meet what we, our definition is, in gist, but from an overall definition of a church, that comes from the state or the feds, we'll have to make that definition.
In support of that, when I was asked a question from Matt Ronstadt, "What do I feel? Is this a church or not?" I said, "Well, you know, do they pay taxes?" That's the first question on my mind. Is a church is exempt from paying property tax?
Look, I guess, but to that point, I would agree with the applicant, a church can still pay taxes if they still choose to.
If they choose.
They still have to apply to get tax exempt stats. So they may not apply, so there still may be a definition of a church, but they may not have applied to get tax exempt stats.
Well, that's where that letter came in. The application was made for tax exemption or reduction in taxing to the tax tribunal, and when it came back and said they don't qualify as a church. Now you're making me say, "Well, you're not a church." You're telling me you are. I believe you are, I believe you worship, you didn't have Sunday service last Sunday.
That would be correct, and I would also like to say that again...
If I go, why?
What I'd also like to say again is that the letter did refer Oakwood Community Church, which is not us. Oakwood Community Church did a practice there for, they mentioned the property they owned in Ortonville.
Same address, same, well, the same piece of property.
Back to the point, okay, we could talk, we could debate if that's a benefit of a church all day.
Right.
But you're really looking to get some direction, let's say, because you're looking to build something to destroy that piece of property.
Right.
And the issue we have is, we're zoned, we really don't know what we're zoned yet, we need to figure that out.
Right, I agree.
And we need to understand how to do that, I don't know if that's a legal decision or not, based on past maps, which will define what we can, can't do on that site, based on what you're claiming to be, if I understand correctly. All right, if they're a church, they can, or they can't, based on the current zoning, we might have to do a zoning change to get them, allow them to do something, or can we still base on zoning, no matter what it is, let's say it's an R1, and they want to add an additional piece of property on that property, they could still do that under certain criteria, just the criteria is changing, based on the zoning, right?
The use would be allowed under either zoning district. The applicants, I understand, would like to do a lot line adjustment to get that, this new building on the same parcel as the chapel, that's where the zoning would come into play, because the lot line adjustment, the newly organized lots need to meet the minimum lot size requirement. So that's the only issue with the zoning, is that if it's R1, it's, what, one acre? If it's SF2, it's five acres. And they can't, based on the preliminary drawings that I've seen, that five acre minimum standard can't be met.
Do they even have five acres there now?
Well, there are two.
No, we don't.
No, I was there this afternoon, I have five acres.
So they, they're not even... Mr. Chairman, people, the zoning map for me, for a second?
Well, he's doing that, we have a definition, like, there are churches, ancillary facilities for the church.
Because I don't see my, I don't know what these properties are. There are, yeah, so, the first question I had was, whether or not it's a church. If it is, we have separate standards for churches, section 5.15, one of the standards that says, "Ancillary facilities must be used for church worship or religious education purposes in a manner which is consistent with residential zoning and compatible with adjacent residential property." They, meaning the ancillary facilities, shall not be used leased or rented for commercial purposes.
Right.
That last sentence, I, I'm quoting Anna, just because it seems that the entire, the entire purpose of this expansion is to rent it out for profit for weddings, funeral, other types of receptions.
And to further what you say, it says in our own ordinance, 5.10B, if they have an ancillary facility, it cannot go in without the main church being part of it, there's the religious, the regular religious...
Right.
...portion of it, then this would...
Well, thus, the, thus, the lot line adjustment to get it on the same parcel.
Agreed.
But the main use is the question, is this a church? If it is, it falls under the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, which there are, there have been plenty of, there's plenty of case law out there, but that case law also gives deference to the township when they make the decision.
Well, it says in our thing that facilities such as community halls, fellowship halls, social halls, recreation facility, and similar uses are ancillary to the church, and in order to have those within the church property, the church has to be the main component.
Yes.
The religious part has to be done, and then that, if it's a portion of it.
Correct. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Rup?
I'm a semi-active member of my Catholic church.
Have you come in?
They charge me $2 weddings, we had to pay a set fee. They charge a set fee if you want to use their facilities, recreational or whatever. The charge, I don't think is applicable to determine whether they're a church or not, because I don't...
It's underlying...
Yeah, my church does the same thing, they charge. If you want to have a wedding, it's a specific charge. They encourage a few paid more than that.
Of course.
Right, the thing I want to be careful of, excuse me, um, excuse me, a lot of the text that you included was only about wedding receptions.
Correct.
I didn't see much about the church activity.
Correct.
And for us, you know, if it is really just a reception hall, you know, that creates our major problem here, for us, with the zone.
I agree.
So we're just, have to find a way to work through it.
Yeah, I think, and again, as I mentioned to my assistant when she had said it in, she has been working on this project and working to get funding set aside to expand the church. She obtained a commitment letter to do so, she was very excited, and had, the letter was not what we're going to be doing there. I mean, the letter actually had mentioned, you know, other things, a corporate event, that's, but it did also talk about weddings, it talked about funerals, it talked about religious worship. Most churches have that, you know, they have reception areas, those people come in, if you want to get married at a church and you go and have a reception, you're going to pay, you're going to pay the fee to do that. You know, that's quite common, most churches around, and churches are not sure to have similar setups. Now, I guess the question is, is, you know, are we a religious organization? And I agree with you, it's really not a burden on the township to make that decision. And I think that decision's been made by, you know, by legislative law, and I think that decision's been made by judicial law. You know, legislative law through the First Amendment, judicial law through the, as a rule law. You know, there's actually been cases that have been tried and tried. There's no specific, there's no specific...
You just want the building built, you don't really care if you're designated a church or not, correct?
Right.
You just want the building built, you don't care if you're designated a church or not.
Well, you know what, after reading this letter today, we'll probably go back, because we have had, we've had a church in that facility for, like a conventional church, you know, we've also worshipped it, we've had our own worship there, but we are looking to build the building as expansion of the church, yes. You know, and if we get a tax exemption, that would be great, if we don't, then we don't.
Well, yeah, that's the, that's the main question, is the expansion, yeah, they're looking for, the petitioners want an expansion to the church use. The question is, well, is it a church use? Because if it's an assembly hall, it's a non, it's a non-conforming use that cannot be expanded.
Not SF1.
Not both R1 and SF2.
All both of them.
SF2. So the main, that's, the main question is still there, and this is why, as zoning administrator, I wanted to bring it up with the planning commission, because I need to know how to proceed. If, and the applicants have the right to apply for special land use, they can do that, but the pre-application conference is far less money if you come in with a special land use and it's denied, then you spend all this money. So we wanted, I wanted to make sure that we could get all the major issues addressed before you spend major money.
And I can appreciate everybody's view of a church, because I have always intended churches...
But you have the hierarchy, because I know above our local ordinance comes state statutes, so I looked up state statute, and it said, basically, the definition of the church, what it is.
Okay. Okay.
And, um, under the Michigan General Corporation Statute, Act 327 of 1931, 45178, it says that, um, it can be established, a church or a religious organization can be established by not less than three persons, but the requirement is that they have a nonprofit status.
Which we do.
Pardon?
That's the only requirement?
Well, there's, it's, it's much others, but it just says, "Any number of persons not less than three may incorporate for the purpose of establishing any church organization for the purpose of teaching and spreading their religious beliefs and principles. Every such corporation shall be a nonprofit corporation and subject to the provisions of this act relating to the nonprofit corporations that are being, except as specifically otherwise provided for," and then it goes on.
Sure.
So the requirement for the state for the definition to be classified as a church is a nonprofit status. And so, I, I mean, I'd have to look a lot more into that in the review, but.
And again.
That would be the 501(c)(3).
Yeah, yeah. Uh, Oakwood Ministries is a 501(c), and is the Reverend of Oakwood Ministries, and she also, uh, you know, she, she has us right here, she's actually a member of a, a tax exempt church internationally.
Question would be, whoever owns the property would have to be there.
Right.
Which is me.
Okay, so if you own a property and you're a 501(c)(3).
Correct.
You're step one, according to that definition.
Right.
Right, and the use of that property has to conform to what the application of the 501(c)(3) is. So if the 501(c)(3) says you're, you're leasing the property out for funerals and weddings and that, and that's been approved, then that would be determined, but if those uses aren't specifically on that application, for the, for the 501(c)(3), then it'd be outside of that application, it would have to be reviewed.
So the 501(c)(3) was formed back in 2009, and is a member of the Missionary Church International. It was formed as a nonprofit. I don't know of a church out there that doesn't do weddings and funerals and services and baptisms and, and all of this, and, and if they can, if they're lucky, you know, I grew up in a Greek Orthodox church, you know, we'd have church and then we'd go have a, you know, big meal, and it was, you know, it was part of their reception hall. But I got married in Greek Orthodox church, and afterwards, I, I paid to get married in the church, and I paid to have my reception there as well. Uh, it's just, it, it's just how it is. Churches have regular Sunday services, some churches worship different ways, some churches might, you know, they might come in the morning, they might come in a different day.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
As far as to be a religious, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, um, I, I think it might be helpful maybe to review some of the, some of the legislation and some of the judicial rulings. Um, you know, I, I think that, um, you know, from my conversation with council today, that we are a religious organization, and I know that, you know, even that we, even though we have, uh, we do weddings, we have a pastor comes in, he does a wedding, and then we have a celebration afterwards. But funerals, we have the same thing, we have a pastor come in. It's not a party hall, it's not a dance hall, it's where we come in, it's, it's no different than any other, uh, church that worships God.
Jack, our, our question was posed as, for conversation.
Sure.
And that's what we're doing since I dug into it, you know. I too have paid for churches at United States military bases, I paid that to pay to get somebody married there, so I, I understand that.
Okay.
But you have to come to the building department and make application as a church. We can't decide whether you're a church or not. I mean, we can make it up in our mind that you are or you aren't, and it's non-binding, it's.
Right.
Everybody else. You have to make application as the church.
Correct.
Which I believe, and then Matthew can go through all the zoning ordinances and determine whether or not your expansion is according to the ordinance, and, and that would happen that way. It's not up to us to determine if you, I believe you're a church, you come to your basement and we pray to God every day, that's fine, but you need to state, "We're a church, here's our church papers, and here's what we'd like to do on this zone property."
Correct.
Which this whole file is on that, but we did not even know. I didn't know that I had to present all this. I didn't even know about the tax exemption or anything. This whole thing is on Oakwood Ministries and the other thing that we're checking.
So are you, are you saying you'd like us to reapply as Oakwood Ministries to expand our parsonage? Is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is.
What are you trying to articulate here?
What I'm, what I'm saying is, I can't judge whether you're a church or not.
Correct.
Based on the facts that I went through, as Matthew asked us to do, I said, "Send the questions to the applicant. The petitioner can tell us if they're a church." I, if I do my research, I come up with a letter from the, uh, tax tribunal lawyer that says you're not, I come up with going to your church worship service on Sunday, which wasn't held.
Correct.
You know, these things in the ordinance that we say, that's not being done, I can make a determination that you're not a church.
Sure.
I can make a determination that you're a church, if you show me your ministry certificate, if you show me you're worshiping regularly, I can, I can make that determination.
Okay.
But I can't tell you right now, "You're a church, this is R1, and we're ready to go."
Sure. What do we, what do we need to do to get things squared away here? I guess on the R1 zoning, and then also on the, on the church. I think that, you know, I think that there's legislative and judicial support that we are a bona fide church, that we do things like other churches. If we don't, they're on Sunday, and I can appreciate, you know, I've always gone to church on Sunday, that doesn't mean there's not worship going there other days of the week, or other ways of the week, or people gathering, a few people gathering for prayer service, uh, that has been ongoing, and I can tell you that Sunday service has been a regular thing there, uh, for many, many, many years. So is there, if you, if you have some guidance, uh, I mean, that's basically what we came here for, so you have some guidance on how to proceed, because the next step is, is a lot more expensive.
Yeah, we're trying to get a couple of steps on how to proceed.
Yeah. And I'd like to get a feeling on, you know, the feeling of the, you know, the commission appeared to, I mean.
I agree with Jack. I don't feel comfortable deciding whether you're a church or not.
Right.
I think you, we're a planning commission, we're not a, a, a commission to determine what your status is. You need to put forth an application, like Jack said, as a church, and if nobody says otherwise, and you come before us and you are identified as a church, then I have to agree, or I have to go by the ordinances, you're a church.
Okay.
And then they're only allowed under special land use.
Correct.
I mean, we have, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I need to make a couple additional comments that don't even relate to the church.
Right.
Or if they are a church or not. When I looked at this paper trail, it looked like they were trying to do a land division to, uh, take a portion of property and create a hall parcel, and then they wanted to have 1.644 acres versus another portion of property that's 1.991 acres to the east of this proposed church property. Is the existing residence owned by the church now?
Yes, it's owned by, yes, Amber.
Or a church.
It's owned by me, we live right there.
Okay, that's you.
Yeah.
The existing residence?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, they live in the parsonage and have the church on.
Because I can foresee different problems cropping up where if you can't comply to land dividing this property to meet the regulations of zoning ordinances that may put a damper in what you want to do to put a proposed barn up in the first place. So there's a lot of things coming up in my mind that I see that could be a little difficult down the road, because to put a proposed barn as a place of assembly under that classification versus number of parking places and everything that go with it, and stormwater management and all the stuff that comes from making, uh, improvements to properties, there's a lot to this whole thing to develop this lane.
Yeah.
And it could become very expensive, so I just don't want to push somebody in the wrong direction and then have them come back to, "Oh, my gosh, I wasn't ready for all that."
Sure.
So there's a lot of things, but when I look at this paper trail going down the line to make this all happen, there's quite a bit to it, so. Uh, when you're non-resident, when you say property wells and then isolation from that is 75 feet, not 50 anymore, uh, with the number of people that could be in that facility through a health division guideline with the proposed septic system, those things aren't easy to get, uh, done anymore. Uh, there, you have things here that could be, that could become complicated.
I agree.
Okay, just so.
We have other.
Just so, and that's not even from the church standpoint of you yet, so.
Right, I, I agree.
I just want to point it all out, uh, so that you don't get, uh, too far down the road, and then all of a sudden, things don't work out financially.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out, but we, uh, we know the health department is something else. The, the actual, uh, facility is not going to hold anything more than the church, you know, so.
Well, that's, you're regardless, I'm just, I just wanted to look at what I'm looking at in front of me right now, and there's some things that might be difficult to do.
Right, so when you get down that path, I'll look at how many, you know, if you're, you said in addition to the existing, so that means, looks like it's actually bigger, so you're going to have to make up more parking spaces and everything else.
Well, it's 4,000 feet, yeah.
It's, uh, it, there wouldn't be any activity in the hall unless there's activity in the church, so basically, they come to the church, they, they have their, uh, their worship, and then they go to the hall. So there wouldn't be any more additional people on the site as there would be in the church. Currently, there's, uh, you know, there's just a tent where they, we put up, if we have a, you know, a big group, we throw up a tent for the day and, you know, have people out, and, uh, I mean, Anne does a beautiful job with that, I don't know.
Right, which I have a bunch of pictures, you know, set up right there.
You know, so there wouldn't not be any added load to what's going on there currently.
So what are the next, I've heard kind of, I'm sorry, cattle?
I don't know, just I'm trying to summarize what I heard today, too. You know, I heard the planning commission doesn't decide, but in, in a way, you know, my belief, we do, we're charged with an ordinance, and it has a definition of.
Sure.
What a church is. We have to make a determination where use fits, and so we have to look at all the definitions of uses, and so we go to our ordinance, and then we would look at state ordinance, and the state appears that it, you know, it's required to have certain filings and to be considered, so all of that gets put in that.
Right.
That bin, and we look at all of that. So if you can get all that together and get all that in a row, you know, and know what these definitions are.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's helpful.
Sure.
So you know, look at the definitions of our ordinance, what the state says, which correlates to that, and see if that all fits. You know, and it, it really appears that it's the primary use that determines what kind of ancillary use could be, you know, put in with that, and our, our ordinance says regular worship.
Right.
So what defines regular? That's part that, it's this process of discussion.
Mm-hmm.
You know, for that, so if it's, it's regular worship, then you're having these things too.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's part of putting this all together. You know, I, I do know that if, you know, if somebody has church services in their place that doesn't make them a church, you know, we have services in the high school that doesn't make the high school a church. So it's all these different components that go in to determining, you know, if it's a church or not, so in a nutshell, when we're looking at all that, it all has to fit together.
Right.
And then it has to have the secondary component of meeting the site plan requirements for whatever use it is, whether it be a hall or a religious, um, you know, facility. So those, you know, that are, the zoning, when, I would think that we would be able to track that somehow within our township and.
Right.
Look at zoning amendments.
That was just before, yeah, before I came here, I saw a gentleman who was in jail for 45 years on a, on a missed call. Because misinformation is quite possible. Somebody could have not colored that extra box in. When I first looked at this, when I first looked at the map, I'm like, "Ah, it's even on the map, it's, it's R1." And then I got, I was in the township, I had the magnifying glass, I'm like, "What the heck?" Everything, the document said it was R1, but on the map it wasn't, you know, I've seen this before happen in township, it's not, it's a little tiny, little something on the, on the map, it's, it's.
Isn't this a decision for that one ZDA? Interpretation?
Well, yeah, so interpretation of the zoning ordinance goes to ZDA.
But that's zoning map too.
And, and the zoning map, yeah, so that's another thing that the ZDA can look at.
I think that would be the worst case, if we actually had to decide.
Yeah.
Which is, it would go to the zoning board for them to pull up all the information.
For the designation of the parcel, the zoning board appeals can, can make an interpretation of the zoning map and ordinance, so.
So is that where we need to go for R1, or can this be handled with the planning commission?
Oh, so in this case, I don't, my opinion, this is non-binding, my opinion is, this almost seems like a township problem, where the township would need to go to the ZDA and ask what zoning classification. I wouldn't take this, I personally wouldn't want to signal the property owner unless we could show that the property owner had some hand in this, not knowing the zoning, and I don't have any reason to believe it.
Have a look for the township.
So.
Actually.
I, I think that could be generated within the township, and how that go that way. Jack, could help me out there?
What I'm thinking is, just like I said, we can't tell you if you're a church. If you come to us and apply as a church, then we use the criteria to determine, yes, it's a church, just as in zoning. If we say it's R1 and you say it's SF1 or 2, then there's controversy or conflict that has to be resolved at the ZDA with the township.
We're not saying one, we're saying it's R1, but the township is saying it's R1 and it's SF2, so the conflict, we're solid on it.
Well, it's either or.
Right, it's either or. You know, so I mean, it's.
Could that be, so if you would ask.
We actually have a special land use under R1s.
Decide if the board would send it to the ZDA for that property?
Yeah, but I, I agree with Ms. Rosner that I don't believe this was any doing of the applicant, I think this was somewhere along the line of clerical error.
Could have been a color.
Yeah, exactly, someone just didn't fill in that, that parcel. So I think the ZDA is probably the best, the best and most legal way to solve the zoning district issue. In terms of moving forward, you have to, if you want to get this expansion, you do have to make a formal application for special land use and preliminary site plan to the planning commission. And then, from what I'm hearing, the onus then is on you to assemble all these documents that does prove that you're a church. Typically, you know, if an applicant comes in and they want to do, let's say, a, um, a restaurant in R1, and they, I would get the application, they'd say, "We want to do a special land use for a restaurant in the residential district." I wouldn't send it to the planning commission, I would say, "No, a restaurant is not a special, a permitted special land use in this district." And the finding, it wouldn't be the planning commission's job to say, "Oh, no, this restaurant is a house." So that's my dilemma here, is figuring out where it's, if it's a church administratively, before it goes to the planning commission, or you applying as a church, sending it to the planning commission, and then this board, this commission making the determination.
Before, before investing $5,000 to do that, I would certainly like to provide the judicial, the judicial information to legislative law that supports us being a church and get that determination made. You know, but, and I, I agree, it's not the burden on the township, you know, there's plenty of law and judicial rulings that, that clearly state what a church is and what isn't, what a religious organization is and what it isn't. Um, I believe we have a, I believe we have a solid case that we are a church, whether we're there on Sunday, or we're there on another day, or we have a group of us get get together and have a prayer vigil. You know, under the, under legislative law and judicial law, that all qualifies as a religious organization, which would make us a church. I think that we can, I think that we can get that taken care of. I would certainly like to have that determination so that that's not going to be a real black, a part of a real black before we spend $5,000 on drawings to, to come before you again.
Right. Okay, so are you clear on where to go from here?
No.
Are you more clear than me?
I don't, I don't probably everybody's ready to go home.
I don't think anyone's going to see me in here.
Yeah, so...
I want to know, and I don't know if this is something that we should get legal counsel from. So the applicant, if, if our, the township's legal counsel determines that it is a church, then I would feel comfortable to send it on to you for the planning commission for special land use.
In which district?
Well, that's, that, the ZDA, I think that needs to be resolved regardless.
Either way.
That needs to be, for future uses, for future property owners, the, the property needs to have an official zoning designation. The use, I would feel if we have legal counsel, legal opinion, proceeding from there, I would feel more comfortable if I had that supporting document.
So to help the applicant, if they need to know whether it's R1 or SF1.
Right, yes.
The onus is on the township to supply that ad before any money is spent.
We have a ZDA rep, that's me, that's the township board rep. The ZDA rep, in a non-binding way, would say, "There's nothing stopping you from going to a township board meeting, telling them the problem, and asking the township board if they would proceed with the ZDA determination on this property's behalf." At that point, the township board, if they so choose, would send the matter to the ZDA, where we would get the information that the township has, and give you a determination and a final ruling on what the actual zoning should be for the property.
Before any money is spent.
Before any money is spent.
Sure. Is that something that we would do, or is that something that the planning commission made a request of the board to review?
The property owner can petition at a township board meeting, or send, talk to the, our administration.
Okay.
And say, "I'd like to be on the agenda for the township board meeting."
Okay.
And, because we have that problem with the zoning. And the administrator would back you up, saying, "Yes, there's a problem with the zoning."
Okay.
So you would be asking the township to pursue that on your, on the property's behalf.
Right.
So that it wouldn't cost you to come in front of the zoning board.
Okay.
Now, the township board could deny the request.
Sure.
Say, "It's up to you," but there's nothing stopping you from asking.
So basically, we're going to say, "We've got this difference. Could you rule that this is one way or the other?"
Exactly. And then they provide all the information to the zoning board, and looks at all the evidence and can make, we legally can make that determination. We're the only board that can to help you with that. And then that becomes a binding zoning decision for that property.
Okay, so we're better off being seen a board than a zoning board, rather than just straight to the zoning board?
The zoning board is going to be able to resolve the zoning issue, unless the township finds a document.
Good question, yes.
So we, we go to the zoning board, not the board, right, not the township?
Zoning Board of Appeals and the Board of Trustees.
You have to leave the boards first, and the board has to request a record.
We have three boards in the township.
Okay, okay, okay.
Planning Commission, Township Board, and Zoning Board.
Okay, thank you. So Township Board and the zoning board.
Right, so the Township Board will direct it to the ZDA to do it.
Okay.
So you need to request them to be able to go to the ZDA.
Okay.
Correct.
Step one.
Like you saw the township board coming to us today for rezoning.
Yeah.
The same principle.
Awesome. So we got, we got clarity on that. Step two with the church. Now, we're going to have the legal counsel. Do you have me to submit documents? Is this something that, I mean, that do, I was surprised to see that we have to prove that we're a church.
No.
So how do we do, how do we do this?
That was asked of us to do.
What's that?
We were asked to determine if you were a church or not. And I said, "I have no, I can't do that."
Okay.
If you come in and apply as a church, you've already proven that.
Okay, so we make application as a church.
Why don't we talk to the attorney?